I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission's Special Meeting for Thursday, November 9th, 2023. Anne, please call the roll.
Commissioner Palatier?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Chairperson Hettigan?
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on our agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 27th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Anne, please call the roll.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun?
Aye.
Chairperson Hettigan?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next up, the regular meeting minutes for October 25th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve? I will make a motion to approve, yes. I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Does anyone have any changes? Hearing done. Anne, please call the roll.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun?
Aye.
Chairperson Hettigan?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Is there anyone present who would like to speak during this time about an item that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one in the audience, that brings us to old business, our discussion regarding temporary sign standards. Anne, please kick it off for us.
Thank you. The commission provided feedback on temporary sign standards on August 23rd. The commission suggested possible changes to the village's temporary sign standards to allow feather flags that meet certain standards for location, number, size, safety, and condition. The comments from the commission are summarized in the background section of the memo. On September 21st, the village board reviewed the commission's comments and suggested that the commission reconsider the standards, in particular, the number of days that flags can be displayed and how many flags each business can have. And I included the meeting minutes as attachment A for your review. Based on the commission's suggestions and the feedback from the village board, staff proposed a set of standards for freestanding feather flags and wall-mounted flags, which are listed in the memo. The standards include, again, those recommended by the commission, and they address the village board's request for consideration of the number of flags displayed and the number of days they can be displayed. In the business district, staff recommends allowing one freestanding feather flag or wall-mounted flag per street front. So in that case, if you had a corner lot, you could have two, on two street fronts, you could have two flags, one of, you know, whatever configuration you'd like. Those would be in addition to any permitted permanent signage. Staff also recommends limiting the number of days that flags can be displayed to 40 days per year. This would allow flags to be displayed every weekend during the summer, between Memorial Day and Labor Day, for example. So that's 15 weekends total. If you displayed a feather flag on each day of those weekends, that would up to 30 days. Plus, you'd have additional days for holidays and other events. Staff proposes requiring businesses that want to display feather flags to obtain, or wall-mounted flags, to obtain an annual permit. And the application materials for that permit would demonstrate that the proposed flags meet the standards that we're proposing and provide a list of the days that the flags will be displayed, so we can ensure that they don't exceed the 40-day limit. And the permit could be amended as desired by the applicant if they decide to have a special event or make some sort of change to their marketing plan. As stated in the memo, one of the limiting factors for the use of freestanding feather flags is the zoning code's existing prohibition on off-premises signs. So you can't have a sign off-premises. In many areas, the property line is at the storefront in the central business district, and the sidewalk is part of the right-of-way. So those businesses couldn't have a feather flag on the sidewalk because the flag would be off-premises. So, for example, the buildings on the south side of East Quincy, like Higgins Glass, the Parks and Rec building, those are all the buildings on the property line. And to make the standards equitable for those businesses that don't have enough room for a feather flag outside of their business, they could use a wall-mounted sign attached to the side of the building. And just for reference, and I'll pass these out if you'd like, but I saw these small flags, wall-mounted flags, that I thought were, that would be good for a situation like that where you don't have a ton of room on the sidewalk, but people could get around, but it still, you know, provides some additional signage for those types of businesses. So those types of flags would be included in this standard. In reviewing the central business district, staff found 15 locations that could reasonably have freestanding feather flags and meet the recommended conditions, in our opinion. And those are all listed in the memo. So that would be the scope, is basically, this would be allowed in business districts, which includes the central business district and those along Harlem Avenue. So the standards would be the same for both districts. And what we're requesting is your feedback on the proposed standards that we have listed. And after we receive your feedback, we'll return to the village board at an upcoming village board meeting to present your recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Junis, would you like to contribute anything, or are you just here to listen?
I'm here mostly to listen. I've already been to this for a while now.
Okay.
If you wanted to say something, feel free to step up to the, yeah, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium, so we can get you on.
Good evening. Thank you. The flags are important to me personally because for my business, it's hard for people to see my business because I'm in a unique place. I'm in the train station. I get a lot of people that can't see where I'm at. I have a sandwich board out there. People still don't see it. I have my van out there. That's when they do see it, but my van's not there all the time because of deliveries, because of different things. I am having a sign put in up over my door, but that, you can't see from the road at all, anyway. So this is why I've been kind of going with the flags. I think the flags look good. I think they're, obviously, I'll keep them in good order and everything. But I think not just myself, but other businesses could really help with their own business with this, so that is all I have, but thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one question for you, something I was curious about. So you have, I mean, in photos, it shows that you have had a sandwich board out there.
Yeah.
But my understanding, I mean, looking at it, it looks like it's smaller than what's allowed. Is that accurate?
Yeah, probably. But not by much.
Yeah, but we allow now it's only four by, or six square feet. That's not that large.
It's not that large.
Yeah, okay.
No, my sandwich board is probably five and a half square feet. It's not much smaller than what's allowed.
Okay.
It's not much to it.
Okay. And then I actually have two other questions. So you put in the past, this last summer, you put two feather flags out on the, what is that side of?
South side, yeah.
The south side.
Mm-hmm.
And you haven't ever put any flags out on the north side, on the train side, on the train platform side?
No, I think that's just, I think it's dangerous, for one, because if trains go by, it would knock it over pretty easily. And then I, kids out there, there's enough trains and everything going by. I didn't want to interfere with that.
So you don't feel that advertising on that side would help people if they're coming on the train?
It would help, I think. I just didn't think having the flags out there would have been, it would kind of been a safety thing, to be honest with you, just having it out there. The trains, especially, the express trains go by quick and they knock, I mean, they sometimes knock over my sandwich board, which is out in front, just because of the speed and everything, so. I, I mean, I'd put it out there if I could, but I just thought it was a safety thing.
And one more question about, I listened to the village board meeting where they discussed this.
Yep.
But other than that, I don't have a good sense of how much demand there is, besides your business, among the other businesses, and I wonder if you have any sense of that, among the other businesses in town?
I know there's a couple of businesses on Harlem. I know the Spenceri had one out. I know the Cubanados had one out. The Riverside Arts Center had one. The church had one. The school had one. So there's quite a few of them out there that have been, come down since all this started.
The school being St. Mary's or Public School?
Both.
Both, okay. Anne, did you?
St. Mary's had a flag, St. Mary's, so St. Mary's had a flag, like mine. The public school had, I was told by Joe, had a different type of flag that wasn't supposed to be out there.
I wasn't aware of the public school flag.
Because what it was, because in the ordinance, it said that it had to be like an event. And then they had something out there saying, "Thank you, teachers."
Well, they have banners out there frequently, like just.
But the ordinance says it's supposed to be for an event, right? That's what, that's what my understanding was.
Makes sense. You can have a special event signage?
Right, but that just said, "Thank you educators," which isn't really a special event.
Sure. And they had it out there for a long time, actually, for weeks.
Yeah.
This last time I noticed.
But yeah, I know the ordinance is, what, a week? That's what it is, if it's a special event.
Yeah, I think it's seven days.
Yeah.
I think, if I'm looking at it today.
I believe so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. So, I don't know if I opened, you showed a photograph of those flags, and that was one of my questions about, I'm trying to think of, if it's a three-by-five flag, it says 15 square feet, and you have a pole that's at a 45-degree angle, and it can't exceed the height of basically the first floor, the cornice. When it hangs down, would that be a concern for pedestrians?
That was, that was my thought, too, is that it might be, it's hard to know without actually looking at an example building and, you know, angling it out. That's why I thought the smaller flag might be an option in that case. It might give folks the opportunity to have a flag up if they don't have, if they're worried about clearance, you know, for pedestrians.
Right. So that would be one of my concerns with the wall-mounted flag, is just, we wouldn't want to approve something and then have flags out there, especially because they're going to wave, they will wave around, which some people exactly are. It's exactly what they don't want. But if it's blowing around, it hits someone, you know, or.
Yeah. In the proposed standards, we suggested a, I think it's eight-and-a-half-foot clearance.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Yeah. Which is our requirement for awnings and blade signs.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah.
And then I just wonder if it's an eight-and-a-half-foot clearance, and you have a cornice, or the window, you said window line, is that the bottom of the window on the second floor?
On the second floor.
If that would just all measure out, so you could actually.
And that's our same requirement for signage, that they can't go above that line, so that's how we picked that limit.
Okay.
I think, I don't have any issue with limiting it to one flag per street frontage. I think that's, that's reasonable. But 40 days per year seemed a little low to me. I personally would consider allowing something greater than 40 days per year. 60 or even 90 days would seem more reasonable to me, so you're not taking the flag out and bringing it in, out and in and out, and in and out, to allow you to put it up for a few months at a time. That would be something that I would support. I'm not sure how the others feel about that.
What do you mean by in and out? Because I think they can only have it there during business hours. They have to.
That's true. That's true. It does need to move around, so I guess that's not so much of a consideration.
My understanding, Peter, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you can have kind of a heavier base and then detach the flag from it. So the assumption would be that folks would leave the base there, they can bring the flag out and put it back in, but also removing the flag, I think, also discourages theft.
Sure.
So.
Please, yeah.
Would you mind going, sorry, we just want to make sure we catch it on the, on the microphone.
I know with my flags, my particular flags, it has a metal base, and then there's a, it's actually water-filled donuts that goes over that, that holds it down. I take them in every night. I've actually managed health clubs and stuff, which had these before, and have gotten stolen, because it doesn't take much to steal it. I know RAC has one. It's actually in a bucket, like a cement, they took a bucket, made it, put cement in it, and then put the hole in there, and they kept, they keep that out all the time, the bucket out all the time, and then they just put the flag in and out. But I plan on, yeah, the ordinance, I think what they proposed was that to bring them in at night or when closed, which is what I plan on doing anyway, so.
I would be agreeable to increasing the days as well. I originally, in my mind, thought 90, because I figured there's three months in the summer. That might be a little bit on the high side, so between 60 or 90, I can get behind. One or the other, or anything in between.
Where, where would it be planned to insert these new textual provisions? Because we've been calling them, I mean, your memo says temporary sign standards for the B2 district. That's what I understand this is limited to. So is there any thought of?
I'm not sure, actually. So I was actually considering both the B2 and the B1 districts. And if I refer to the B2, you know, at some point, I think, I think the interest is having the opportunity for both the B2 and the B1 district. I think my plan was to have your comments, take your comments back to the village board, and then if we have a favorable recommendation from the village board, work with village attorney Pickrell to draft a proposed language and bring it back to you for either a public meeting or a public hearing. I think because the sign standards are not in the zoning section of the ordinance, we don't necessarily need to have a public hearing on them, but attorney Pickrell will advise me on that, and the best location for the provisions in the code.
I, my, the reason why I'm curious about that is just that it seems like, I'm sorry, we're sui generis with all the other temporary signs. So it would be, because temporary signs are for, it's temporary banners, I think, are seven days. You have your sandwich boards, which are perpetual, as long as it's just during business hours. So it seems like yet another category of temporary signs. It doesn't really fit with the other temporary signs.
Yeah.
And I wonder if we'll then get requests, I mean, who knows, for like the temporary banners to be also 40 days or 50 days, or whatever it is, and have that. So I was just curious about where we'd put it, because it seems like a new category of signs. I mean, my opinion is, I kind of vary between thinking 40 days is a little bit too long and maybe 30, 30 days is more sensible, to thinking, what I originally thought was like 90 days, oh, it should just be out there every single day during the summer, like basically during your period, because you're the one who's been requesting this. But it sounded like the village board was not, a lot of people were not that amenable to having it like every day of the summer, so I, and I do find that feather flags can be somewhat, depending on how they're done, they can be somewhat intrusive and unattractive. Now, if we reduce it to one, and we have 10 feet, or perhaps, I was even thinking, like, I looked at the photograph in one of our packets about what it looked like when you had your flags compared to someone who was walking by. It looked a little large to me, because I think it's a two-foot, two feet on the bottom, and then an eight-foot banner on top. That looked a little out of scale for the pedestrian area. I can see how it makes sense if it's on the side of a road where cars are just coming by, but we have a lot of pedestrian traffic everywhere we're talking about. So to me, my opinion is perhaps the banner part being maybe, instead of eight feet, seven feet. And then I think there should be a limit on the width and the height of the banner. So I think it's typically yours is 21 inches wide, so maybe 21 inches or 24 inches wide, and then seven feet in height, and whatever that would work out to as the square footage. That would be, what, 14 square feet? I think right now, your proposal's 15 square feet, so that's not a huge deal, but I just find that perhaps the 10-foot is a bit overpowering for the pedestrian area. And what else did I have? As far as the wall-mounted flags, I think maybe we want to be very specific on the size of the flag and the height of the top of the pole, I think is a lot of what, maybe what we're concerned about, as far as the cornice line or the window line. It's the top of the pole, because the flag hangs down below that typically. So that should be, I think, made clear. And then I think it is clear that this would be in addition to a sandwich board also being allowed for every business, which could be useful, helpful. Another suggestion I had was including in the signed code photographs of what we're talking about, so people know what a feather flag is and know what a wall-mounted flag And, oh, another question I had was, you talk about an annual permit. Is that going, is there going to be a fee attached to that, or not a fee?
I, you know, I don't think that we necessarily need to charge a fee. We may charge a small administrative fee. I doubt that we will have that many folks who submit, that it would be a huge administrative burden, but that would be to be determined.
Yeah, to me, it would be reasonable to have a minimal fee, if any, you know. And I think the last thing I had was just, we're talks about clearance. I think it's three E. It says freestanding feather flag shall have five feet of clearance, just to be clear, that that's on the sidewalk. That's like horizontal clearance from, so there's pedestrian.
Exactly. So it's not in any pedestrian way. There are some businesses where they could have a feather flag that's not in the way of any pedestrian areas, but we just want to make sure that there's enough clearance for folks to get around it safely.
Correct.
And also, if it blows extremely in the wind, we want it to be safe.
Right.
Yeah. But hopefully, it should be, you know, one of the criteria is that it should be well-anchored, however it's secured to the ground.
Although even then, you could have gusts of wind, so I, I suppose my last recommendation would just be that this would be like something that the village should monitor if it is enacted, to see how it works and how many businesses do it, and is it a problem either with appearance or obstruction, or flags falling down, or whatever, that there should be some kind of monitoring phase for this. I think that's all I have.
What are, and what are any thoughts about adding the language "weather permitting" or any sort of obligation that during inclement weather, they can't have these flags out?
There may be some general language that we would add, and I think that, I believe there is general language in the sign section about just generally maintaining signs in good working conditions, so that they're not a safety hazard. And if there's not, I think we can add some general language specifically for flags and feather flags. They should in no way be a safety hazard. You know, we try to be pretty specific. They can't impede vision of motorists and pedestrians, but I take your point that there should be something that.
Perhaps if the weather gets bad, or it gets windy during the workday, they should be obligated to bring those flags in?
I think that's, or at least something to put into the permit, you know, the documentation that's given to the business, that they're aware of that.
Sure.
That they need to monitor.
That makes sense.
Especially the feather flag, maybe not as much, unless it's a tornado, you know, the wall-mounted.
I would also be in favor of extending the timeframe.
I think there was some discussion of permit applicant, like sort of specifying the days they would have it. Maybe they would say every Saturday and Sunday, or every Wednesday, Saturdays, is that, and does anyone have any ideas on that? I was curious of how specific we want the applicants to be in advance of, you know, an entire season or an entire year of when they would be displaying. If anyone thinks that's useful or not useful.
I think it's almost required for staff to be able to track it. Otherwise, you know, staff would need to be out there on a daily basis, saying, is the flag out there, is it not out there? But if they put on their application, these are the times that we're going to have, or the days that we're going to have it, then you can total them up and.
Sure. And that we will have a record. If we get a, you know, a question or a complaint, we can refer back to the application and say, oh, you know, they are supposed to have, you know, this weekend was one of the designated weekends that they're going to have the flag out. And if they change it, we're going to just amend the application and say, oh, we actually changed our minds. We want to have it these days instead of that, and we're going to keep track of the total days.
That sounds reasonable.
So are we making a formal recommendation to the village board?
If we could just review your comments and just summarize them, so I have, make sure that we understand what the consensus is, and then I can forward your recommendation to the village board.
All right, so most of the standards, I think we are okay with. Number of days per year, we feel 60 days, 90 days would be more appropriate?
I'm okay with 90 days, so. Yeah, 60 or 90, still.
60 or 90, okay.
And this is for the entire year?
For the entire.
So for the other businesses, they might want to have it out fall or spring, for Smiths, or.
Mm-hmm.
90 totals. I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right.
Someone agnostic on it.
Okay.
Say 90 if they want to go less.
Of course.
Of course, yeah. Up to their, their decision. And let's see, the other was the question of the size for the flags. So 18 square feet versus, let's see, if we had talked about doing 24 inches by seven feet tall, that would be 14 square feet as maximum?
Yeah, right. I, I'm sorry, I thought it said 15. Oh, it's the wall-mounted.
The wall-mounted were 15, yeah.
Yeah, 18 would be two by nine, which would be quite big for just the flag, I think.
I think I measured a 10-foot-tall flag with a two feet from the base to the bottom of the flag, and it was just a little over two feet in width, so I came up with 18 square feet, I think, was the recommendation on that. And then three by five is the standard, you know, flag that you see.
Right. But if the feather flag is 10 feet, and there's a two-foot base, it'd be an eight-foot.
Sure.
Banner.
Eight, yeah.
So it'd be 16.
It was 16, and I gave a little wiggle room for different shapes.
But like I said, I think that the, I don't know. I mean, my opinion is that 10 feet is too high.
Is it too tall?
For a pedestrian scale, but I don't know what everyone else feels. I would, I have not walked by a feather flag lately. I was only looking at the photograph of, you know, people walking by at the train station, and it just seemed a bit too much. And taller it is also, the more likely if it falls over or hits someone, you know, I don't know, that it could be an obstruction before it's noticed, I suppose. I don't know, but it's my opinion.
So with regard to the feather flags, Anne, please indulge me, the 18 square feet in size, you're just measuring the flag itself, you're not measuring from the ground, from the base?
Correct.
So if the base is four feet tall, the feather flag could potentially be 22 feet tall?
The intention of the height limitation was the total height.
Okay.
And then within that, you know, if you wanted to have a, if you had theoretically a 10-foot-tall flag with two feet between the base and the bottom of the flag, and then you had, I don't know, two and a half feet in width, that was, you know, depending on the geometry of the flag, and then you had eight feet, my thought was, you know, you'd be closer to 18 feet at that, at that height.
Is there anything in here limiting the base of the feather flag to a certain height?
No.
There's a total height limit, though.
There was just the total.
Oh, there's a total.
They would feed it to the total height. The total height was 10 feet from the ground to the tip of the flag.
Okay.
Yeah. And just seeing, just a quick search online, there are plenty of flags that are eight feet tall, you know, that seems like a, should be easy for folks to order if they don't, you know, if that's your suggestion of the maximum height.
I don't have a strong opinion on eight feet versus 10 feet tall. Any other thoughts?
I don't have any strong feelings. I think the 10-foot height limit from the ground seems reasonable.
Commissioner Braun, what do you feel about the height?
May I ask, how tall are the gears to you, feather flags? That's because I'm trying to visualize. Yes, sorry.
I want to say they're closer to 10 feet. It's not quite two feet. It's from the ba, the base kind of goes up, and then the flag starts. So they're probably pretty, pretty close to 10 feet, but not, maybe not quite. One thing to think about when you're talking about the amount of space for the sign, it's not square, right? So it's not two feet by eight feet. It's two feet by angles, and so it's less than 18, or I guess it'd be 16 square feet. So we're going to figure that out, too. But it's, I think it's a little less than 10 feet, so.
I'm okay with the 10 feet.
Consensus is we're?
It's 10 feet.
Okay.
Consensus is 10. Even though I'm an outlier.
Any other suggested changes from the? Any other suggested changes from the standards that are proposed in the memo?
And I had noted the safety issue that Commissioner Brown brought up.
Yes.
That will put in general language that applicants will be responsible for ensuring the safety of the flag, especially during inclement weather.
Okay. And I guess the last issue is, Planner Simon, you had shown the photograph again of the smaller flag, but you're still intending to have the three by five flag as the outer limits of what someone.
The outer limits, that's correct.
But someone could have a smaller flag too, and that could be encouraged.
It could be more appropriate in a business that's along Harlem Avenue than it is in the pedestrian district, which would.
The larger flag in the long Harlem or busy or more commercial.
Precisely, yeah.
Okay.
All right. We have it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is for information only, the cross-community climate collaborative preliminary list of initiatives.
Yeah, so this preliminary list of initiatives was provided for the commission's review and commentary, either individually or as a commission. So that information, that does not need to be provided today. If the commission would like to review the information and come up with a single unified response, that could be provided during our next meeting, which is on November 29th. Or if you'd rather have individual responses, if you'd like to make those, you can do that too. So I just generally wanted to notify you that we do have the preliminary report, bring it to your attention, and invite any kind of commentary that you'd like to provide or if you have any questions to bring those up. But also if Commissioner Miller wanted to speak, I know that she's on one of our teams.
Yeah, so I just say a couple words there. So this whole thing started in January, it seems like longer ago than that, when there was, well, before that even, so last June, I believe, the village board voted to sign an MOU to enter into this C4 collaborative. And C4 says, it says here, it's called cross-community climate collaborative. And it's with other towns like Forest Park or some other towns, I forget, it's Maywood, I forget some of the other ones. So it's part of a broader municipal organization. And then, so there's this MOU, and then in January, there was a general meeting at town hall where people were asked to brainstorm and come up with ideas. So in this memo, when it talks about, there were hundreds of ideas, that's where the ideas came from, I couldn't be hundreds, maybe it was 150, but there's all written down and like probably all done brainstorming sessions, that kind of thing. And then they were kind of winnowed, winnowed down a little bit. And there were six priority groupings, which is place, prosperity, just like it says on the handout here, those six groupings. There are a handful of people who volunteered to be in the sort of working groups for each of those, all led by someone from the community. So I'm guessing, yeah, most of the groups are like six to eight people. And then since January, February, March of this year have been working, trying to hone the initiatives, which are then listed here, these 32 initiatives that are listed on here. I'm part of the resource regeneration group, I'm not really sure what all the other groups are doing or how they work or how they're operating or all the rest. And we've had a number of meetings where we've talked and we've tried to, you know, write down, draft and redraft what our priorities are. So I'm actually very, before I say anything more, I'm actually interested to hear what the three of you, when you read this, what did you think? Did you think it was clear what's being gotten at, what they're trying, what we're trying to do, what the C4, again, it's not me, I'm just on one group, what the general cross-community climate collaborative group in Riverside is trying to do, or is it not so clear? See, I thought, I mean, to me it seemed pretty clear what the general goals were. Many of the initiatives made me think, okay, this sounds great, now how are we going to do all of these things, you know, what are the next steps going to be, but I understand we need to start somewhere. I think it would be great if we, as a commission, could make some sort of statement or something to that end about being in support of the initiatives. And, I mean, I would volunteer to draft something that we could possibly review at our next meeting to talk about how these, because, I mean, so many of these things are in line with the goals of the zoning ordinance, it seems like a natural fit for many of them.
I think this is a very ambitious undertaking, and I give you a lot of credit and all of the volunteers.
Well, what would you say is sort of the principles behind this? Can you, I guess I'm trying to tease out, what are the principles behind this? I mean, do you get the sense of sort of what the goal is here? If you had to describe it in, you know, 20 words. I mean, to me, when we're doing this kind of thing, there's sort of an overarching organization to it, there's certain things we had to go through when we created these initiatives. So I can, when we signed the MOU, when the village signed the MOU, there was a reference to reducing greenhouse gases, that that was a principal reason why we were doing, where we were going to be doing these things. That's why it's climate collaborative, I think. And I don't know if some of that's being missed. So in the, I mean, what I notice is that in the draft memo from Trustee Marchoska and then the draft over the cover page, there's not a, there's not a, I mean, there's not a reference to greenhouse gases at all in reduction of greenhouse gases. There's some reference to climate, although in the, in the draft cover page, it says, let's see, where is it? The cross-community climate collaborative asked its member communities to develop an action plan to address resiliency, maybe that should be resilience, equity and environmental protection, it's not even climate protection. So I just, I'm a little concerned that it's not clear what the motivating goals of this because, and if you look at the 32 initiatives, some of them, I think, to me, were unclear as to what they said. But if you then looked at the recommendations in the document that came with it, those actually helped to really illuminate what some of the written-down initiatives were. So my, one of my comments would be that maybe some of the initiatives need to be more clearly written to really get at, like, so for an example was, and this is not to, you know, just pick on this one, but for living infrastructure, where it says like promote, and then the second one, implement land and water management, environmental best practices. I really don't know what that means. And I think if you look at the recommendations, it's much clearer what it means, so that would be sort of one of my comments. And I, so when we went through this process, we had to go through a sort of analysis process, and there were three steps, you were supposed to look at, would this action that we came up with or that was brainstormed, reduce greenhouse gases or eliminate it, actually eliminate greenhouse gases, or would it contribute to resiliency in the community? If it did one of those two things, then we had to ask, can it be implemented in an equitable way? And I don't know that the document that we're looking at really communicates that to everyone, to stakeholders, to citizens and all the rest, that there's sort of a, that kind of organizing force behind this. So that would be one of my comments on this document.
Yeah, I would say in reading it, I definitely didn't, you know, the emphasis on reducing greenhouse gases did not come through at all. To me, it seemed more about creating stronger communities through sustainability.
Right.
Which is, you know, great, but something perhaps different from what the goal may be.
That's what I got, too, actually.
Yeah.
To your point, Commissioner Miller, I think that some of the verbiage could be a little bit more clear, like, for instance, I'm not quite clear on what ensure housing security for all Riverside residents. Does that mean that we want to ensure everyone has lock doors, or does that, I mean, what, so, I mean, but I think that this is a draft and those kind of things need to be worked through.
And I think that's probably why they want us to comment, and you could submit comments individually, and as a, I'm sure they would take all kinds of, you know, careful comments like that, you know, but I picked up on that same one, what does that mean? Or there's one about all residents can age in place, it's like, okay, if I'm 75 and I'm living in my, you know, 3,000-square-foot house and I'm by myself, should I really be aging in place or should I not? Is that not consistent with community and greenhouse gas production and all the rest? So I think, yeah.
I couldn't really comment on that because I didn't know what the intent was.
Yeah.
So I can't even correct that statement because I don't know, or suggest anything different because I don't know what the purpose is.
Well, if you look at the larger document, that sort of, you know, I think you have to go, there was a link in the trustee's.
Yes.
Memo that said, go here, and then if you go there, then there's a list for each initiative, there's a statement of need, which I think is the initiative, and then there are recommendations. And sometimes those recommendations are much more illuminating, I think. So if like for that one, if I could find it. So ensure housing security for all Riverside residents, the recommendations are assess data and create plans to address sustainable housing needs, engage subject matter experts for developing ecologically sound infrastructure, research and develop policy zoning requirements that contribute to energy-efficient housing and other decarbonization efforts. So that sounds much different than maybe the overall initiative.
Yeah, what was in your packet was obviously fairly high level. The more detailed information is on the village website, I would encourage everyone to dig into that. And this is meant to be an introductory opportunity for us to talk about this, and I would encourage you, if you have an opportunity to review the village website and you do have questions about the specific initiatives, to let us know and that we can answer those questions for you before the next meeting. And then hopefully we can revisit this, and if Chairperson Hennigan would like to draft something, I'd be happy to include that in the packet, or if any of y'all would like to include that, I'll include that in the packet, we can discuss it again during our next meeting.
Okay.
I'm just also a little concerned that I want people who aren't involved in this to like, when they read these things, not just think, oh, these are all nice words and nothing comes of it. I mean, to be a little bit more like strongly crafted, worded, you know, that it really communicates to citizens and other, you know, residents of the village, like what we're doing here and why we're doing, specifically why it's being done. And it's not just like social equity and programming, like it could be like the township offers or whatever, but it's a new, a newer kind of initiative with a goal of addressing, you know, greenhouse gases and climate issues and how that impacts resiliency for flooding as we know here, extreme heat or whatever. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, any other thoughts, we're good for tonight? Okay. All right. In that case, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 29. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.